To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First we have the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda of the June 20th, 2019 regular meeting as presented.
Second, motion in second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the election of Secretary of the Board of Education. You ready for my term?
Chairman Daniel. By acclamation as Secretary of the Board of Education, 2019-2020 school year. Nobody reads like you.
Second.
I have a motion in second to elect Mr. Daniel by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Motion passed.
Thank you, folks.
I think we had a hard time last week.
I thought there was going to be some...
Hey, actually, he done a great job.
Well, we can rescind this.
Next we have the appointment of the Treasurer of the Board of Education.
Who to appoint Dan Apps of First Bank of St. Genevieve as Treasurer of the Board of Education for the 2019-2020 school year.
I'll second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the approval of the consent agenda items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you.
Have a motion in second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, there was. Next we have public participation. And next, report of superintendent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In your board packet you have notes of appreciation. I would just like to point out that both of these notes are from students. One is a 2019 graduate, the other is a former St. Genevieve High School graduate. Both of these students are writing to thank the board and the school district and Peggy J. Johnson for establishing a scholarship. That is amazing for these kids. They are both recipients of her scholarship and really appreciate the support and everything she's done to continue to support them in her memory. So, I just wanted to point that out. It's nice to get notes from kids and both of these students seem to be extremely appreciative of the scholarship. Next, I was going to talk to you again about policy BDH-1, public participation at board meetings. Again, this policy was adopted on September 20th, 2016. It is not a new policy. What we're doing here is we have established some guidelines and a public participation form that we will begin using at the July board meeting. Copies of everything is stapled over to cover on the table by the agenda. We're going to try to have that table there at all times. This policy goes through how to handle agreements, written correspondence by mail or emails to the board, placing items on the meeting agenda, and what the public comment section looks like during a board meeting. Sorry, too many buttons. So again, guidelines and the form, we will have those out at every meeting. When someone wants to participate in the public comment time, they'll need to fill out the form and turn it into the board president by 6:45. And the board president will review it and will discuss it to determine whether what the person wants to talk about is an item that goes in open, on the open agenda during public comment, or it needs to be put in closed session because it's about identifiable students or groups of students or employees. So, we will begin using all of this in July. And I think if she has not done it daily, we'll have it posted on our website.
It's posted on the website on the Board of Education.
Okay. Do you have any questions on this policy or what we're going to do? Yes.
Dr. Fleet, I would like to add to that. Jim and I were at a MSBA thing last week and I went around. I probably hit just about everyone I knew in either of the ones. And if they didn't do it this way, you have, and if you were on, you only got three minutes. And they stuck to it. They had a timer. And I just want, you know, everybody to know that we're not making this up. This has happened and, you know, we're just good people, so we let it go. So, now we're going to force it.
We're going to allow, our policy says five minutes per person.
Yes.
Yes, we will allow five. Okay. The next item on my list is the auditors' visits. The auditors will be here in the weeks of July 8th and August 19th. We have already received our list and we're working on compiling a lot of information for them. So, it's always a chaotic and hectic time when they're here, but, you know, we enjoy having them here and making sure that everything is in line and on track. Summer maintenance and housekeeping has began. As you probably saw as you walked in, there's things in the hallway everywhere. So far, and this is just a short summary of what has already started. We have a roofing project. We had some pipes that had continuous leaven, like when they swept, they would leak. So, the pipe's not leaking, but it would leak, the condensation would hit the ceiling tile and then we're replacing a lot of ceiling tiles. So, we're re-insulating some pipes. We are removing the tile floor in the middle school, high school cafeteria and just buffing the concrete to kind of give it a face look and make it more kid-friendly. We're also going to try to get it painted this summer. So, we're still trying to figure that out. We are painting the high school gym and we're doing what I would call the summer deep cleansing, meaning we take everything out of the classrooms, we wipe it all down, we wax the floors, we wipe the walls, and then we put it all back in and have it ready for the fall. Summer maintenance is doing all kinds of projects. One that I kind of caught my eyes, we're building a gravel walkways and playground equipment out of Bloomsdale. Maintenance is pretty busy during the summer. We're painting a lot of classrooms and there is a lot going on. So, I just want to thank our custodians, our housekeepers, maintenance people, the kids that we hire, the adults that work with them during the summer. Their help is greatly appreciated and helps keep our buildings looking amazing.
I've been to many schools and this one is the top of the line.
Absolutely.
Our people do great private facilities. So, very proud of that.
They're good people, yes.
The next item I have is the Fowler Bus Service Inspection. Missouri State Highway Control 2019 Annual Bus Inspection Program. They have to come inspect our buses every year. You see in the middle there the statewide numbers and then St. Genevieve Guard Two is over on the right. We had a total of 42 buses inspected at Fowler. The approval rate was 95.2. The defective rate is 4.8 and we had zero buses that were out of service. Basically, I called Buck and I said, "Okay, what's the defective issue?" And he said, "Basically, there is a bracket that holds the brake line on part of the bus underneath." And there were two buses that that bracket, the bolts had either wiggled out and was loose or the bolt had fallen out. But it in no way caused a safety issue because if it had caused a safety issue, they would have taken it out of service. So, it was just a minor defect. They put the bolts in, tightened them back up, and they'll continue to check those and make sure that they're all where they're supposed to be. So, a little minor thing there, but all looks good. I want to thank James Ash, Cory Schwint, Devin Mebury, Mike Jokers, AKA Buck, Brad Mall, and Christine Mall for all they do with Fowler to make sure our buses are safe and they look amazing, too. So, those people work really hard and we appreciate all they do.
I see the first three all the time when I let them know that.
They do a really good job keeping up with all of it. And then in your, the last item on my report is safety update. I believe there's an update in there from Bloomsdale Elementary about their active intruder drill that they did in the end of May. So, I think that's the only one. Before we move on, I do want to point out that I left for you and I left over by the interest, the latest edition of the Dragon's Digest. Bailey Otto put that together and it looks amazing. She did a really good job. We did not get one out this spring, so she wanted to make sure she sent one out now. And she will begin working on the one that will go out at the end of July.
Beginning of May.
For our summer registrations and with all the back-to-school information, but that digest looks amazing. She did a really good job.
It looks great. Got it in the mail. I just got mine today.
So, she put a lot of time and effort into it, so.
Great job.
We'll take that if we get a chance. I also left at your spot a middle school year book. As you look through that, if you get a chance, email Audra Womack at the middle school and let her know what you thought she and her kids did putting it together. It looks really good, too. And then my last thing is actually for the board. I think a couple of board members went and received this. The St. Genevieve Guard Two Board received the 2019 Governance Team Award. This, basically, they have meetings that they have to attend, they have training sessions that they have to attend, there's a lot of criteria that they have to accomplish in order to get this award. So, Martha and Jim went and accepted it at the beginning of June and brought it home and it looks beautiful and amazing. And I want to say congratulations to all of them and thank them for all of their hard work.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate it. So, after we finish with the open session, Bailey wants to take some pictures. What?
No, not to her.
Congratulations. I believe that is all from our report.
Thank you. Looks like there's no unfinished business. Move on to new business, food service prices.
Okay, for the 1920 school year, well, I should start with, every summer we have to do a federal calculation. It's this formula, you plug your numbers in and it tells you if you have to raise your school lunch prices or if they can remain the same. So, Jonathan Piku, our core data specialist, takes care of his forest. He put the information in this year and we are required to raise our lunch prices by 10 cents. So, what we are proposing for the 2019-20 school year is, I put the table up there for you, we're actually also proposing to raise the breakfast prices by 10 cents because we're also a little low on our breakfast prices compared to the reimbursement we're receiving. So, the recommendation is for the elementary and middle school reduced breakfast rates to be 40 cents, the full pay to be $1.40, and the adult rate to be 1.65. For lunches, at the elementary, the reduced price would be 50 cents. The full pay price for elementary would be 2.70 with the middle school and high school being 2.80, and the adult prices being $3.10.
Were we able to hold it last year?
We were.
I thought so. So, it's been two years. Yeah, it's been two years, so.
It's been, 2016-17 was when we set, like, last year's price. We've had that for like two, three years. So, there's a number we have to get to. And I, $93, something like that, so. It's a calculation.
That's still a cheat meal. McDonald's is definitely...
I guess. I move to approve the following food service prices for the 2019-20 school year as presented.
Second, I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have food service bids.
On the food service bids tonight, I have the milk bid. We received only one bid from Prairie Farms. We actually sent it out, I believe, to three companies. But they were the only one that bid. The 1% chocolate milk for our next school year will be 27. Skim is 27 cents. 1% is a new category. We did not have that last year, but 1% milk will be 26. And then Jordan Mueller, our Director of Food Services, said we have to start offering a lactose-free milk, and that price is 65 cents. So, those are the milk prices. That is an increase over the prices that we had last year. The 1% and the skim were both, the chocolate milk was 22 cents and the skim milk was 21. So, those are increases of 5 and 6 cents. So, we were just happy to get it in.
I'm going to accept the following bid for the 2019 toy school year for milk, Prairie Farms dairy.
I'll second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have mowing bids.
We put out the bid for the mowing at the Ballfields. We sent it to three companies and one company sent us a bid back to Midwest Lawns. They are the company that we have worked with for many years. Jerry does a really good job. These are actually the same prices that he's been charging us for many years. So, my recommendation would be to move forward and approve Midwest Lawns to take care of the Ballfields with the option. And I think we did this for like two or three years with the district option if everything is good and no one else is asking us about the bid, just to renew annually.
He does do a good job, yeah.
Moving to accept the following bid for 2019 toy school year with the district option to renew on a yearly basis, I have mowing a company at Midwest Lawns.
Second, I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have pest control bids.
Pest control bids. We sent, again, we sent the request for bids out to three companies and we received bids from Camerons Termite and Pest and Bug Guy Pest Services out of Mark Lawn, Missouri. Camerons sent us a three-year rate. Bug Guy sent us one year and three years. And if you look down through their, Camerons just charges a monthly fee of $115. The Bug Guy Pest Services, if you add his numbers up for each building, his monthly fee is 370 for one year and 350 a month for three years. So, I would recommend that we stay with Camerons. They do a really good job. And go ahead and new corporate with the three-year contract with them.
What do you do at the Ballfields? Do we have to have that sprayed or?
I don't think they go around spraying, but I will check with Keith.
Yeah.
It's probably a small additional charge, but I'll double-check with them and make sure we get those concessions.
Yeah, concessions. Does anybody have food there?
Concessions and everything, I'm sure they probably do the buildings down there.
I will check with Keith and make sure we do that.
Are always very...
Yes, they are. And they're really easy to work with.
I move to accept the following three-year bid for the 2019-20, 2021, and 2122 school year from Camerons Termite and Pest.
Can I agree? I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have mandatory random drug testing for students participating in IMSA sanctioned activities.
Yes, and I have asked Mr. Nickson and I to submit that information to the committee together and ask him to oversee all of this.
As Dr. Fleet said, we started the process back in the early fall, really, and the first thing that we started to do was simply just discussions about the possibility of drug testing our student athletes. And that those talks progressed into the formation of a committee. And that committee consisted of a couple of board members, building administration, district administration, students, parents, community members, coaches, and teachers. So, there was a pretty big group, I think. By the end, we even had the mayor on the committee. So, quite a few people on that committee. We met three times for an hour of peace each time. And the very first meeting that we had was just simply to decide, to discuss and decide whether or not we were wanting to and going to ask the board to drug test students. There was an overwhelming yes at that meeting, so then that led to the second meeting. The second and third meeting, we talked about a lot of different things. And before we began any of those discussions, we asked all the schools in the MAA, there's 12 total schools included ourselves, we asked the other schools if they drug tested just to kind of get a feel for those surrounding schools and who did, who didn't kind of thing. About half the schools in the MAA do drug tests. So, we asked those schools who do to send us some information, you know, who they test, I mean, what students, what student groups, what they test for, how often they test, what company they use, and what the discipline is for any student who gets a positive drug test. So, it was really interesting, it was really informational when we got that from the schools because it kind of opened our eyes a little down a few things. One of those especially being the discipline. And when we first started this committee, one of the things we decided right off the bat was, everything that we're going to do with this committee moving forward is going to be to help students, not drug test students to catch them. It's not us against them, it's us with them for them. So, we wanted to make sure that the entire focus of the committee was that we were doing everything to try and help students, okay? But one of the things we looked at with discipline was, you know, when you looked at all the schools in our conference that do drug testing, what their first offense discipline was. And for the most part, everybody was the same. It was 30 days and with the option, or I guess with the possibility of going through some sort of drug treatment and reducing that 30 days to 15 or 20 days. But that was a big eye-opener because our Student-Athlete Handbook currently says, "First time, 365 days, you're done," okay? So, that was, there was a big difference there. So, that was one of the big discussions we had was, you know, if we're really trying to help students rather than condemn students, is this something that we need to look at making a change? So, in that packet that Dr. Fleet gave you is recommendation, first of all, of two drug tests, but also changes that would need to be made to our Student-Athlete Handbook, including the discipline of how we would handle positive drug tests. The company that the committee decided to go with, we did a little research and there's a company in Park Hills called ODAX. ODAX does a lot of the schools around us. I think they did all, the conference schools, there were six, they did five out of the six. They, when we met with them, with the people from ODAX, they strongly recommended that we do saliva samples rather than urine samples. The reason that they suggested that is because when you call a student out to randomly drug test them, and that's something that I wanted to stress very much with this as well, that this is random drug testing that we're going to do. There's going to be students put into a pool, like I said, we're going to, if approved, we're going to. The student names will be put into a pool and that's going to be any missha sanctioned activity. So, you're looking at sports, but also banned, Scholar Bowl, speech debate, those kind of things. So, any sport or activity that falls under the IMSA umbrella, those students participating would be subject to a random drug test. But anyway, so, if you're doing your analysis, you call a student out, you tell them that you're going to drug test them, and if they don't have to use the bathroom, you could sit there for three hours with the student sitting there with you, waiting for them to have to use the bathroom. Or if they don't want to take that test, they do the same thing. Whereas a saliva sample, they walk in and it's right away, you swab their mouth, you send it to the lab. We save on cost for mileage because if we did a urinalysis, we're going to have to pay ODAX to travel here and travel back, so that would be cut out. But also, you know, when the student does do a urinalysis test, there's a privacy issue. And with a saliva sample, it takes away that privacy issue. It's just a simple non-invasive swab. Put the sample together, mail it to ODAX, and then they let you know if there's any positive, any positive tests. So, I guess I'm here today just to ask that you allow us to move forward, starting with 1920 school year and drug testing, random drug testing, any missha sanctioned activity or athletic team, and any student that participates in any of those sports or activities.
Will the Jersey staff be doing those?
That's a good question. We, that was one of the things the committee talked about, who's going to do, who's going to do the test? With it being a saliva test, we will most likely start out with the principal, the athletic director, and the nurse as a witness. When speaking with the school lawyer, they said to make sure that there's always witnesses and that the students who are being tested, that information is kept very confidential. So, the thought is that we would start out with myself, Mr. Haney, and since this is only for high school students, not middle school, myself, Mr. Haney, and Nurse Gina, if she's available, to help us out during that time.
Talk a little bit about the random aspect. When you say random, who's doing what?
Good question. That is a big aspect as well to keep it random. You know, we live in a small town, we know all of our students. To try and keep it, again, very random, we are going to have ODAX be the company that selects the students. So, basically, we send them a pool of students with numbers and they send us, when we ask them to, we say, "Hey, we're ready for 25 numbers." Send us 25 numbers. They send it to us and those numbers are tied to a student. So, we do not select those students. We have, not only are they random, but we have an outside company randomly select those for us.
Sure.
So, will it just be announced over the speaker? You need to come to the office to be directed.
That, seeing that, we want to be very careful that we protect students, first of all, their privacy, but also, we don't want students to be pulled out of class and, "Hey, everybody looks, they're going to be drug tested." Usually if a student is called to the principal's office or the assistant principal's office or the athletic director's office, it's just simply a slip that gets sent down, given to the teacher, the teacher gives that slip to the student that says, "Need to report to the," in this case, it would probably be the athletic director's office, and they come down to my office and when they get there, that's when they find out that, "Well, you're here to do a random drug test."
Oh, this information is in the Athletic Handbook, right?
Yes, and that was the changes. There were some, because of this, there had to be some major changes to the Athletic Handbook. And I believe Dr. Fleet included that in your board packet. Part of it was, with our Student-Athlete Handbook in the past, or actually currently, there's two sides, there's a two-sided page at the back of that Athletic Handbook that they sign off and say that they'll follow the behavior contract, that they've read the Student-Athlete Handbook, there's a health form. Well, this would be an addition to that, so they would still fill out that form, but it would go from a two-page form to basically a four-page form. And you can see that on there. I think the very back page is where they would, both the parent and the student would sign, saying that they are aware that if they participate, their name... sign, uh, saying that they are aware that if they participate, they, their name will go into a random, into a drawing or into a, a pool to possibly be randomly drawn.
So it's basically a permission slip to play sports and you're signed, giving permission for us to include you in a random drug test?
Correct. Yes.
It's not just sports, right? So?
Well, it's not just sports, it's, it's activities as well, so that's, um, we're gonna have to start having all of our missha sanctioned sports and activities signed a handbook.
So that's like choir, band?
Band or choir, see if I can remember all of them. Band, choir, scholar bowl, speech and debate, and that might be it.
Cheerleading and athletics?
Cheerleading is, uh, yeah, it's, it's, I consider it a sport, but.
And emeralds?
Emeralds too, yes ma'am. Uh, also in the handbook, we had to, uh, we looked at changing the possible discipline. I mentioned a 365, uh, is what it currently is. Um, the committee felt like that was more of that, we're catching you and condemning you first chink, uh, first offense and you're out kind of thing. Um, well, you'll see in there now, it's, it's more uniform with the other schools around us, that they, uh, would be suspended for 30 days the first time and, uh, they could come back, or actually before they could come back, they would have to, um, go through a drug treatment program and also pass a drug test. So there's also in there, there's a first offense, second offense, and so forth. Um, it's no longer just first offense, you're done, 365, and seventh offense, you're done forever kind of thing.
So the first offense, 30 days, no matter what?
This doesn't, 365, unless you, which you should, do the drug rehab and then 30?
Yes, then 30 days.
We, there was no, you can't reduce to 15?
Remember, we talked about that and we thought that, cause, uh, Mr. Bosser was on the committee with us, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we talked about that and that the fact that most of the time, they're not gonna be able to pay, if they failed it 15 days ago.
They wouldn't pass it again that quick, I know. Okay, I'm just, and then we also talked about, you know, a lot of kids aren't in these activities, it could still, a parent can sign to opt their student in, so I guess that would be a whole separate form or something.
Right, we haven't talked much about how we were gonna do that, but we, uh, the committee did talk about how if a, if a student doesn't do extracurricular activities, but a parent wants their student to be tested, the parent can opt them in and their name would be going to the pool with the student athletes.
It really wouldn't do them any harm at school, more so, you know, for their parents is to say.
There's no academic discipline.
No academic discipline when they fail a test, so they would get out of school suspension or ISS or anything like that. There's no school discipline, uh, that goes along with the testing that we would do. It would strictly be extracurricular, so a non-student athlete whose parents opted them in, it would just be informational that, hey, mom, dad, they did fail this test and it would be up to the parents to handle that, how they choose to.
If I'm reading this right, too, if it's like a, if it's a choir student and they fail, but the performance is, counts a grade, that is not taken away? They could still be allowed to perform if a grade is dependent on the performance?
Uh, normally we discussed the, the fact that they, well, when I called the lawyer there today, he's, uh, the lawyer said that you need to make sure that, that, um, if a grade is tied to that, you need to have an alternate assignment possible for that particular student.
So they're not punished academically?
Right, right, they wouldn't be punished academically because even if they can't compete or perform in that particular concert, it would be that equal, um, equal as far as the points, I guess you could say, alternative assignment.
So how often will the tests occur? Is it when the last two days randomly chosen, or once a season?
At least once a season. Uh, and by seasons, we mean the fall, in terms of spring's four seasons. Um, but I'm thinking we'll probably try to be more than that, more than once per season. If you, if we, the committee discussed that if you do it the same all the time, then they know when they're gonna test and we want it to be a random, not only random students, but we want it to, them, the students to not know when it's coming and, and how many we're gonna choose. We want that to kind of be, I don't wanna say a secret, but, um, to not be something where, oh, they just tested a week ago, they're not gonna test again until two months from now kind of thing.
And if you're one, if you're number 25, you get 25, then you're going right back in the, right back in the hat.
Yeah, so if, if you've been tested, it doesn't mean your, your name is pulled out and you're not gonna be tested again. You could be randomly drawn multiple times.
You know?
If you're lucky.
If you're tested, obviously you would get positive results if they occur, but if you get anything else, if, and if no result means just move forward.
Correct. And if there is a positive test, then, uh, then they send it off for, for confirmation, uh, to make sure that it's not just a, a false positive. Uh, so if a student fails a test, you, you know, obviously you wanna make sure that if you're gonna, and discipline them, uh, that, that you're, that it was a true, uh, failed test, so they, they, the ODAX company would take that same sample and run an additional test to make sure that it wasn't a false positive.
Safeguard. Safeguard. So students that are on medications and sort of, having to handle that, if they get tested and, they're tested or something?
If they fail a test, they, uh, have to provide a, um, written prescription for whatever they, now, let's say that they, uh, and I don't know a lot about the different types of drugs, barbiturates and things like that, but let's say that OxyContin, they're taking a, a pain reliever, uh, for a cer, for a surgery they just had, and they fail a test. There are, give, that student is given the opportunity, um, them or their parents, to provide the school with proof that they were, uh, prescribed that medicine, uh, recently so that that could be a reason why they failed, they had a positive test.
These were the great meetings, you know, like we went through, we, there was even discussion about who to test, like, it was even brought up to test anybody who drives, you know, and we didn't decide to do that, it was really stuck to the athletes.
You know, what percentage of our student body participates in this?
Um, it's around, uh, 40%. It does vary from year to year, but when you look at the activities, main involvement and stuff, it's, it's around 40%, give or take.
What about managers?
Managers, uh, that was something else that was talked about and, and, um, I think the, the conversation came and went really quick, but we decided that managers aren't actually on the missha roster, so they wouldn't be included because the, the lists that we would give to ODAX would be the actual missha rosters of participants.
Mr. Nix, I wanna make sure I was reading this right, too, kinda in the theme of being for the kid, not against them. If they test positive and they commit to, uh, enrolling in a rehabilitation program, it would go from 365 to 30. And if a doctor releases them, they would be allowed to still practice, but not compete?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was, that varied a lot between schools when you looked at different policies and schools that drug test, but the committee felt like if a, if a student is abusing alcohol or drugs, that we need to be positive, we need to be positive that they can physically handle, um, a basketball practice or, uh, being out in, at a softball practice when it's 100 degrees outside. Um, they need to be able to be, uh, in physical condition to handle those situations, so if somebody fails a test, they have to be cleared by a doctor before they can practice again.
Are the consequences the same for possession?
Uh, yes, so, and that's, that's another thing, this, on top of this, as far as the discipline is concerned, let's say that a student is pulled over by the, uh, by the police and they have, uh, marijuana on them, that would go into the drug policy as well, so they would have to go through the 30 days, uh, or there would be 365 unless they went to the, the drug rehabilitation, and then they can reduce it to 30 and so forth. So possession, uh, use, um, I think it's worded in, in the handbook there, but, uh, any association, you know, if they're driving around with somebody and they say, well, it's not mine, it's theirs, well, that's just how it goes.
So just about a non-misha student is caught with drugs or, um, is arrested for being under influence or something, they would go strictly under the other disciplinary policy for drug, or does this one just take over all?
I don't, and, uh, Dr. Taylor could answer that better with, uh, discipline, but I don't think that, that a drug offense outside of school carries over into school. I don't think a student would get ISS or OSS or anything if they're caught on a Friday night by the police. That's it, same.
But if they were?
If they were here and they had it on them, they would be punished according to the discipline policy.
To be disciplined policy, not this one.
Right. This is strictly.
Just to make that clear to people.
Right, this is strictly extracurricular.
This is also, if I'm reading this right, not reported to the police?
Correct.
We handle it according to our aci, our athletic discipline.
Correct, because they're not actually caught with the drugs, they're caught with the drug and it's a completely different situation. Uh, then it's, it's a school, that's cause they're at school.
Yeah, the, the, when I say this, um, the random drug test.
Right, right.
Any student who participates in any activity across the board and that they're in that pool all year long?
All year long, yes, so.
All year long, so committing on what date?
Uh, the, it would be the first, as soon as we get all of our fall rosters in, we'll send that list to, which is gonna be before, before the first, uh, athletic contest. Um, you know, rosters, you got kids coming and going, uh, to practices, so coaches always have to have their rosters to meet, uh, about a week before their first contest so that we can get them onto the, to the website, to the missha roster, uh, before they compete cause that's, that's a missha rule, they can't compete unless they're on your missha roster on the, on the website. Uh, but once they go on, so let's say you got a young man that just plays football only, uh, once his name goes in, on, in August, he can be drawn in March because once his name went in at the beginning of the year, it stays in for the remainder of the school year. And then at the end of the school year, those names go out and you start over with the new group of fall students the following school year.
Last name official school attendance is when it's over.
So even if you played football, your name stays in all year long?
Yeah, correct.
And you're there till the last?
Till the last day of school.
Okay.
Yep. Lots of good questions. Any other questions?
This is in the handbook and it's in the letter that parents have to sign before their kids participate in it?
Yes, so the, the athletic handbook, the very back page would be, the back page is now, uh, they, they go through the handbook and then they sign saying that they've read the handbook, but now there would also be a page saying that they are given permission and, and realize that their child could be randomly drug tested based on their participation.
Would there be a chance that the parent says, I don't want that?
Any denial, uh, and that's in the board policy too, any denial of a test is treated as a, as a positive drug test.
Okay.
What if?
I mean, I.
If they refuse to sign that newspaper?
If they refuse to sign it, they can't compete.
Okay.
Um, yeah, they can't compete until they turn down a, a handbook on, yep.
And I think once the parents understand that, that we are working, we're working to help these kids, we're not out there to catch them, like you said, we're trying to help them if they, and if they are, and maybe they just need help and we're gonna get them back.
Right.
That's what a lot of the conversation was at the meetings, was it's just an intervention, just trying to help, just, you know, to curtail, make them, have them make better choices.
Right.
And get, you know, one of the big things is now, you know, if we decide that we're gonna drug test, if a kid goes to somebody's house or to a party or whatever it may be and, and somebody tries to get them to use drugs, they have an out, other than just my mom doesn't want me to do it. Now they can say, you know, I'm, I'm not doing that, I let my drug test be in school and I can't play basketball. Now this is, uh, an additional deterrent, an, an additional thing that they can use to not, uh, succumb to peer pressure, shall I speak?
You know what, we can help these kids now. Look what it's gonna be like when they leave for college. They'll already be in that mode not to do it. I mean, I'm not gonna say it's, they may not ever do it, but that is just kinda my, my side of the part.
Any other questions?
I don't have much to add.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Thanks. I just wanna say thanks, like, cause I know this, man, we talked about this last summer or something around there.
It's been a while.
And it's been a while and there's been a lot of hours put into this, so I appreciate it, not only you, but the administration, community members, like I said, you said the mayor was on the committee, several other community members, um, students, teachers, and, and the effort was put in to get it right. So, thank you.
It's not an overnight thing.
No.
It's not a knee jerk, let, let's do it, then tomorrow we got it done, no, it takes, takes time.
The decisions began a year ago.
Right.
I kinda came in at the second meeting and there was some spirited discussion, um, on that committee about why we're doing this and, and a common theme from everyone was what's best for the kids. So I wanna thank the community members as well, Jeff, for heading it up, you did a fantastic job. Every question that you guys asked, the committee discussed at length and, and, so they did a thorough one and good job. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve a mandatory random drug testing program for students participating in all missha sanctioned activities in athle, in athletics effective for the 2019 school year, 2019, 20 school year. Furthermore, to adopt policy JFCI, student drug testing and the updates to the stages of high school athletic handbook and athletic forms.
I'll second.
I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I just checked the rules.
Next, we have a grading system proposal from St. Genevieve High School.
We have three high school teachers who tonight, who were on the committee and helped lead this discussion.
I'll start with a little bit on the history, on, on why we saw a need for this. Um, this committee was formed back in May of 2018. We met four times during the 2018 till 2019 school year. The committee consisted of 14 high school teachers and staff members, and we also had additional input from three middle school teachers and administrators from both the high school and the middle school. At our December meeting, um, we sat down and perfected the, we thought we perfected the proposal, um, we agreed to a consensus. We shared that proposal with the high school teachers and administration and they were given three months, um, to discuss it at their grade level meetings and propose or discuss any changes that they felt like we needed to make. Um, there were no suggestions for changes to the proposal, so then we formed an advisory committee, um, consisting of community members, students, parents, um, board members, and the teachers that were on the committee. We met on May 22nd, I believe you have a list of the committee members, and we discussed each one of the, the pieces of the proposal separately, um, because we didn't want, wanted you to see that there's three different pieces to it. Um, we made some minor changes to it and then, um, we came to a consensus on it. So the first thing that you'll see is we are recommending a change to the grade point scale, to move from an 11-point scale to a four-point scale. And our rationale behind that was the majority of the high schools in our region, um, they use the four-point scale, also community, or colleges use the, the four-point scale as well. Of the 16 schools in our region that we had, were able to get data on, um, only three of them use an 11-point scale. So that was our rationale behind the first item. The second item, um, is proposing a change to the grade scale. The rationale behind that, we had two reasons we wanted to see that change. One was, um, it will align better with university grade scales. So as an example, if you're taking, um, calculus at, here at the high school for college credit and you get a 91, well, on our current grade scale, that 91's gonna be a B plus, but on the university grade scale, it's gonna be transcribed as an A, so they don't match up. The other, um, thing that we thought would be better beneficial by going, doing this is that it will align with other schools in the region. So if we have a student that transfers here from another school that uses a similar grade scale, um, it makes that transcripting of that grade to go a little bit smoother as well. The third item is changing the grade system from a system based on quarters to a system based on semesters. Final grades would be assigned at the semester and grade checks will be administered every four weeks, so that we're still doing grades and reporting those grades to the parents every four weeks. But instead of the end of quarter one being, okay, that shuts down and you start over for quarter two, it just continues to accumulate. And, uh, the two, it just continues to accumulate. And the benefits we saw to that were, one, being it allows your assessments to be more evenly weighted. For example, you get to third quarter and we have a lot of snow days. And so if you only get one test in during third quarter and you don't do well because there's only one assessment grade, your grade plummets. So if we take third quarter and fourth quarter and combine it together and not have quarters, it's more cumulative. Another benefit we saw to this was if a student is doing poorly towards the end of what we now call a quarter, then they look at that and they say, okay, well, there's no way I'm going to pass by the semester, so I'm just not going to do anything the second quarter because there's no use. This gives them hope that, yes, you can still pull this out. The fourth item is adding the designation of Kumwade, Maga Kumwade, and Suma Kumwade on the non-weighted standard grade point value for graduating seniors. We are not looking at taking away any of the current honors that we have. We will still recognize top 10%, still have valedictorian and salutatorian. We just wanted to add another honor, another way to recognize those students that are working hard. And they are going to help me answer questions. Yes.
So you, there's no quarter grades. So there'll only be honor roll twice, just each semester?
Yes.
No first quarter, a honor roll, second quarter?
Correct.
First semester, second semester?
Correct.
Or you go fall or spring, or you go college?
Usually just first semester and second semester.
Okay. And it took so long to get there. This makes more sense to me than the 11-point. And I got, these are going to be junior, I never did figure it out yet, so.
We were kind of the same.
And this is just high school?
Correct.
I know.
Correct.
So is the middle schools on an 11-point?
Yes.
Right?
They don't do GPA.
They don't do GPA.
Well, yeah, that's true. Their grade scale is the same as what we currently have. But yes, they don't do GPA.
That also would be, sorry, that also would be tough because of athletic director here. We check grades on a quarterly basis for eligibility at the middle school. So the high school, no, we check it per semester. There's something to keep in mind if it is a school.
I think it's a different.
But you're going to do grade check every, so you'll.
Grades would still be reported and go home to parents. You know how they'll do like, at four weeks, you get a progress report and then you would get first quarter. You'll still get all that same paperwork. It just won't be called.
They won't call it that fast.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
How much difference does this grading scale than middle school and high school, elementary?
We were just talking about.
Yes. At our admin meeting a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the grade scale. If you approve this change, all of the buildings will use this grade scale. They were okay with changing and they like the grade scale.
Okay. So.
And it wouldn't make much sense to have a 91 be a D+ in middle school when it's a.
Right. And that was, that was our reasoning too, you know, with the college grade scale and our grade scale, it's really not fair to that kid to have that transcripted two different ways.
So this will be high school?
Correct.
So let's say somebody's got a kid in middle school, his GPA is at 10.5. That's still going to stay in?
Middle school.
They don't really do GPA at middle school because they don't get credits at middle school like they do at high school.
Well, it's always all powers.
Yeah, it can still calculate it, but it's not really about.
It wouldn't be, like, we use GPA for valedictorian, salutatorian, those types of things, whereas middle school don't really.
It's not really.
Right.
And I don't know, they may convert to a four-point scale because really it's the same. I don't know, we haven't talked through that part, but I do know they were all.
I think they went to the high school that dipped their toes in the water.
We, and like I said, we did have a couple of middle school teachers come to one of our committee meetings. And I think they wanted to just kind of hear, well, what are they thinking? What are they doing down there? So.
All right. So it's small. It'll all like power, it'll reflect the four-point scale on your GPA on Power School and all that.
Yes. Jason Bowman was on the committee and he's supposed to be our guru on Power School and making all that up.
I'm sure that's going to be fun.
I think I liked when Chad went to Three Rivers and they didn't have his transcript and they asked him what his GPA was. And it was awkward because they were like, well, what is, what is that pointing to on our scale? It was hard to tell. So it will make working with colleges and GCA's a lot easier.
I think what sold me when I went to the meeting, because I was inquisitive why we would change, was the fact of the 91. You know, kid works hard, gets 91 on calculus. Here at St. Gene High School, that's B+, but it's SLU, it's an A-, or A. And then Mrs. England also pointed out that that could factor in scholarship decisions. So.
This is just another amazing thing that our faculty does for us.
I'm so glad you did.
I move to approve the grading system proposal from St. Genevieve High School effective for the 2019-20 school year.
Second. Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I hate to be a broken record, but again, this started how many months ago and how much effort was put into it. And I just want to say thanks to the community members, teachers, students.
All participants.
When I was at the meeting, there were multiple community members and also a professor from Southeast Missouri State University, all in favor of it. So, thank you very much.
You should.
Thank you.
All kinds of big things tonight. Next, we have adoption of the budget.
Yes. Before I get started, in your book, I have three mistakes that we need to fix. Do you have it in your book, okay? I know, I shouldn't make mistakes. Nine o'clock, come on, I have to finish. On page two, on page two, under 14, we need the support staff. Item number three, that should be a 25 cent increase to all base salaries, not 30. So that's 14B3.
Oh, wow.
It should be 25 cents. Okay. And then on page 229, we have girls wrestling on here twice with some mistakes. So we did just print out, copy and delete it at your area. So if you just want to insert this page right there, it has the correction on it. And then on page 300. Okay, in the middle of the page, there is calculation for theoretical current tax yield. And then underneath that, instead of being assessors, collectors' commission at the end of that second item, it should be estimated uncollectible taxes.
What page are we?
300.
Okay.
We have two assessors/collectors' commission, and that's not right. The 2% is the estimated uncollectible taxes. So here we go. While you mark those up. Fiscal year 19 budget, the current school year that we were in, we believe that the revenues and expenditures are going to come out better than we thought, closer to more of a, maybe a balanced budget. And that's just because of the conservative revenues and expenditures and the projections that Dr. Edley and others beforehand, they've always been very conservative in their budgeting process. But it will take a couple of months before everything is finalized. And we know exactly where all four funds will finish out. And we will receive those final numbers when we do the amended budget. So then you'll have a better idea. For the fiscal year 20 budget, the one I'm presenting tonight, like I said, I continued the practice of being conservative on the revenue projections, trying to be accurate on the expenditures and building in some contingency for those unexpected expenses that just seem to pop up, like a roof or a trash compactor that decides may come off of, you know, things like that. It's definitely, it was interesting, you know, doing it all from the beginning this time, trying to balance what we need, what our students need, but yet be fiscally responsible to our patrons. I did put up here on the presentation, our mission, working together to create success at St. Genevieve High School and beyond, because ultimately, that's what this budget is about. That is what we do here. We provide quality educational opportunities for our students, and that is always our focus, what we need to do for our students. So with this budget, basically at this point, it's our best guess on projections, assumptions, the state of the economy. We do anticipate right now deficit spending by approximately $535,000, but that uses funds in our balances. So, you know, we don't have to worry about there not being money there to cover that. Approximately $200,000 of that are the contingency funds that I built in for some of those unexpected things. So that deficit is actually a little bit smaller if things come in the way I'm projecting. What I did do this time, and for the first time ever, is all of these salary schedules and packages were actually built in Software Unlimited. Software Unlimited is the school district's accounting program. It took a long time and it's a very complicated process. We will execute and actually move those packages into payroll on July 1, because we have payroll next week and we don't want to mess that up. So we'll execute that and move it in on July 1. If we start looking and we start seeing problems with the numbers, the way they transition in, we may do an amended budget this fall to get things lined up. It's really the unbuild right now. We think it's going to go smoothly and things are going to be the way that they're supposed to. And all the numbers looked good when I was working through it. But I just kind of wanted to prepare you and I'll let you know if we do need to do that amended budget. This budget meets all state requirements for the school district budget development. It will be reviewed by the state and our auditors. And it does allow the district to be considered financially sound with respect to state requirements. So I was pretty overwhelmed, but it went pretty well. So now I'm going to go through your budget book real quick and just kind of point out some things. Page two is basically a summary of adjustments and additions. It talks about the things that we need to implement, the things that we've added, such as, one of the examples here is at Bloomsdale fifth grade, we needed to add a teacher. So this budget takes that into account. It talks about recertified salary. It talks about our support staff salary increases. So this is just the summary. Then we have pages 10 through 170. This is why we're here.
Yes.
This is all about the great things that our students and our staff and our buildings accomplished. This is probably the best part of the whole budget. So, you know, as you have time, please read through that and see all the great things that are happening throughout our.
I agree. So I booked it up and that's why St. Gene is ranked 29 out of 27 schools. Because of the staff, what we spend, like the administration, everybody. That's pretty cool. 29 is not bad.
And every year, that section is even stronger. That's okay. So. Then pages 171 through 227, that's your three-year comparison for revenues and expenses by fund. That is a requirement to develop the school district budget. Pages 228 to 231 have your salary schedules. 232 to 298 is the fiscal year summary totals for revenues and expenses. That is the actual budget numbers that we're going to start working with on July 1. This, that section, as I, as we built the budget, was a little difficult at times because we have all these new accounting codes and there's no history to see what we spent. So we made our best guesses on where we were at during the development to put numbers in. So I'll be happy to have some history down the road to make a better determination on all of this. And then page 299 is our debt service schedule. And you can see on there in March of 20, the 2017 advanced bond refunding payment will be paid. So that will be 6.8 million that is currently sitting in plan three. So it will be paid and removed from our balances. That was never, I mean, that was just a holding place part until we had to pay it. So that will be put out there. And then on page 300, that is just the budget summary. And so on the budget summary, I wanted to point out that the projection balances will change after we finish the current budget. And again, that will be shown on the amended budget when we do.
Dr. Flee, on that debt service payment, that advanced refunding we did in 2017, the interest on that money paid the interest on some of our existing debt, correct?
Yes. The interest stays in plan three and has been helping some of those payments. So that's, that's been an added bonus.
Right.
So, do you have any other questions? I have a lot of people I need to thank because this was definitely a team effort, a learning process. And I think in working together, we've come up with some other ideas to maybe make it a little bit, go a little bit more smoothly. But I definitely need to thank building principals, directors, supervisors, building secretaries, Carrie Pfoff, Linda Holtz, Tana Shank, Teresa Green, Paul Taylor, and especially Chris Ritter. At some time or another, they all either helped me with questions or sat me down and told me it would be okay. So I really appreciate all their help and support. And I'm sure I've missed people. So I just want to say thanks to everyone.
Well, we feel that you've done a great job.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Kind of the same thing as the other two. I know a lot goes into this and it starts real.
You don't just turn a page and there it is.
You know, for everyone out there, we got this budget book over a week ago. So if we had any questions, we were able to talk to them. So if you don't ask a lot of questions tonight, because they weren't answering.
Anybody wants to see it?
Yeah.
It's public.
It's public reference, yes.
I'd also point out, at least in my six previous budgets, each year, it's been a deficit budget. And each year, I think it varied from 250 to 600,000. I'm not, don't quote me. But each year, we come out flat to, in the black. I think one year to the tune of $400,000. And so I appreciate the conservative estimates.
I move to approve the proposed budget as the budget for 2019-20 school year.
Second. Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to go to a closed meeting. Mr. Secretary.
I move that the Board of Education, the whole enclosed meeting with closed record and a closed vote following the regular open meeting on July 16, 2019, to be held in the Art of Politics Library, 715 Washington Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items, benefits, legal action, cause of action, or litigation, lease, purchase, or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of identifiable individuals, scholastic probation, exposure of graduates of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare case lists of identifiable individuals, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specification for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovations to which the owner has proprietary Scientific and technological innovations to which the owner has proprietary interests. Records relating to municipal hotlines established for the reporting of abuse and wrongdoing. Confidential privileged communication with an auditor. Operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident. Existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property. The portion of the record that identifies security systems or access codes. Records identified would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunication network. Credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical, virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes to use to protect electronic transactions. I further move to notice this meeting and the tentative agenda be posted as required by law.
Sir?
I have a motion in second, roll call, Eric Falter?
Yes.
David Boma?
Yes.
John Hook?
Yes.
Tim Kirchner?
Yes.
Terry McDaniel?
Yes.
Martha Reeser?
Yes.
Richard Rulo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven oh.
I'll move to go to a close session with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break. I have a motion in second, all in favor? Any opposed?